Good evening and welcome to the October 30th meeting of the Chapqua Central School District Board of Education. We've been in executive session since 6:45 discussing the employment of a particular employee. Do I have a motion to bring us into public session?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Jane Shepherd.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you very much for all coming tonight. I have a couple items from the president's report. I know some of the board members have some things to say. So about a week and a half ago, the board was able to spend a day and a half on our annual retreat. I'd like to thank my fellow board members and Christine Ackerman, our superintendent, who took away time from their families and out of their personal lives to spend time together on behalf of the school district and the community. I'd also like to thank David Shaw, our district's council, for spending a few hours with us. Lastly, I'd like to thank John Chambers. He was our interim superintendent Chapqua about 10 years ago, Jeffrey?
I'm sorry, what's that?
John Chambers, about 10 years ago interim superintendent?
A long time ago.
Okay, a long time ago. So he facilitated the retreat for us. It's great to have him there because he's very familiar with our district. Besides lots of in-depth discussions, we participated in a project-based learning exercise similar to where our students participate in. I think they're much better at this than we are. But we had to build a race car out of PVC pipe, four wheels, and a few bolts. Our goal was to race Dr. Ackerman around the track once. We did that, we actually did it twice. And so that was good. Then Jeffrey had a great idea. He said, "I should be the next driver." Well, needless to say, we need a lot stronger PVC pipe. The car didn't go one foot, well, went one foot down. We were able to discuss how we work as a board, how we can improve, and how we, as a district, can continue being leader in public education. This Thursday, November 1st, we're fortunate to be able to host at our district the State of New York Commissioner of Education Marielle Nolia and New York State Regent Judith Johnson, when the administration will be discussing with them an educational overview that our district is undertaking, as well as touring some of the new spaces that our district is implementing, global learning centers, flexible classrooms, steam labs, the iLab, et cetera. Vicky and I will be joining them on Thursday, so thank you very much for the invitation. Last week, the New York State School Board Association held their annual meeting, convention in New York City. Jeffrey and I were unable to attend, but Jane, Holly, and Vicky Tipp were able to attend. I'd like them each to give us a short recap of their time last week.
Unwilling to attend.
Unwilling. Okay. I was unable, you were unwilling? So Vicky, Holly, Jane?
Okay, I can start. NISBA has their annual, NISBA's the New York State School Boards Association. They have an annual conference every year basically to have votes on resolutions that would guide their work based on advocacy and what they feel their membership wants them to focus on for the year. And in connection to that, there are a number of seminars that they give. So Holly and I attended the school law seminar and Jane attended a communications seminar.
Yes.
And I thought there were some interesting takeaways on the school law seminar that I wanted to share with the board. There were a number of topics. One of the topics was on school safety. And they talked, you know, they talked about school violence, which is of heightened concern these days. And they gave a few points that I think are worth noting. They said that incidents of violence are rarely sudden and impulsive acts, so it's clearly something that the person has thought of for a while, and that most of the time people knew about an attacker's idea or plan or had seen concerning behavior. And these would be usually peers, siblings, friends, and schoolmates. They stated that there is no accurate profile of someone who would undertake violent acts. Most attackers were known to be coping with significant losses or personal failures, and many had considered or attempted suicide. They were careful to note that what would be a significant loss or failure for a young person would be significantly different than for an adult, so it would be a significant loss for them. And they had, they talked about a bystander study where, you know, it's important to create a climate where students feel comfortable sharing information, and that this sharing of information is vital to safety because, you know, as was pointed out, people most often times knew about or heard the person talk about plans. Of course, there are laws requiring safety plans, which all schools have. But again, the focus was on the importance of a cohesive and nurturing school climate, providing mental and emotional support services, and having school safety plans and threat assessment teams. So Holly, I don't know if you had any other takeaways from that particular presentation?
No, I wouldn't have anything.
But I thought, okay, all right. Then there was a segment on political discourse and school speech. The seminal case is Tinker versus Des Moines School Board, which has held that students may express their opinions if done without materially and substantially interfering with school operations and without intruding on the rights of others. This has been well-established, and there are many cases surrounding that basic principle. But I thought one of the interesting takeaways and good to remember is that when, you know, student speech threatens to disrupt the school environment, I think a good practical view is that it is important to recognize the importance of student voice because we're raising future leaders and that it's more helpful that the initial focus be on how we can work with the student rather than how to stop the activity. I thought that was a good perspective to take on it. There was a segment on sexual harassment of staff. We talked about the new ESSA plan, but the focus there was on comprehensive support and improvement schools and targeted support and improvement schools. Those are categories of schools in need of more support, obviously. There was a segment on special ed litigation, and that was mostly about the cost-benefit analysis of settling, which is not usually how we do it here. And I believe that those were all the most significant takeaways that I had from the seminar.
Holly?
So I was actually only able to attend the pre-law seminar, pre-convention law seminar, and I think Vicky did a good job of highlighting the key takeaways.
I can add a few things. When they were at the pre-law seminar, I was at the pre-convention communications workshop. I think the focus was dealing with how all of our districts can better communicate in a crisis, how to use all of the tools that we have, whether it's social media, security systems, et cetera, to communicate. Some of it was very crisis-focused, and one of the more moving aspects was listening to Dr. Janet Robinson, who was the former superintendent of the Newtown, Connecticut School District, who gave an incredibly moving speech, really giving, you know, a timeline and a breakdown of everything that happened there, which is very difficult to listen to, but was really incredibly informative. And I know that we have looked into using organizations that will help us really sort of use the lessons from that horrible tragedy in our long-term security planning, et cetera. And so that was, that was difficult to hear, but very helpful, and I'm hoping it's something that will help our district. But they also talked about day-to-day communications, and one of the best things is not only listening to some of the speakers talk about how we can better communicate with, you know, amongst ourselves and with our community, but one of the best things is sitting with colleagues and, you know, at a table and seeing what really works well in other districts. So that's always a benefit. We're always looking for a better way to push out communication, for a better way to have people communicate with us. So we've got a lot of ideas that we're going to be, you know, continuing to talk about, whether it's from public comment period to things we put on our website, to finding better ways to communicate information effectively and making, helping to make the community feel that they are being heard. So I thought it was really quite beneficial.
Thank you very much. Lastly, we received a letter today from the Town Recreation Department via some members of the community who are involved in the sports programs. The letter referred to field usage and scheduling. Every year, we have discussions with the town in regard to field usage, scheduling, and costs. However, we did not receive any formal communication from the town to district speaking communication. I had a brief conversation with the town administrator and the town supervisor, and we will work with them to understand the genesis of the letter. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone, tonight. I am the superintendent. We have a lot of new faces in the audience, so in my report, I just have a few things I'd like to highlight before we begin our presentations. The first, I'd just like to couple out what Warren had shared regarding our commissioner visit on Thursday. We're really excited to welcome the commissioner and our regent to the district to see our new spaces, to learn about some of our progressive practices. They're going to speak with our students, they'll speak with our faculty, so it's a really exciting opportunity for Chapqua to show the State Education Department some of the great work that's been happening here. I just would like to acknowledge last week was really challenging for us. We had a concern at the Clinton residence, which many people know is in our district, and we also had a home invasion all happening on the same day. And I want to thank our parents, our administrators, our staff, Chapqua Transportation, and the Town of Newcastle Police Department for helping support us as we navigated through those difficult situations. Last night, I had the opportunity to attend the interfaith vigil for the victims of the Pittsburgh synagogue shooting at the Temple of Bethel with my children on behalf of the district. I'd like to thank Rob Reedstein, our town supervisor, for inviting me to attend. I would also just like to share how incredibly moving the vigil was and reassure our community that we will continue to provide the safest possible environment for our students, one that values people for who they are as members of our larger global community as well. I'd like to thank Nintendo, and many of you may have seen the article in Newsweek. They had piloted their labo in Grafflin, so that was really exciting for us in one of our new maker spaces, so I'd like to thank them for selecting Chapqua as one of their districts to pilot their new products in. Next Thursday, November 6th, is our second superintendent's conference day, and it'll be focused on social-emotional learning, as we know that's part of our strategic planning target areas. And we have Mark Brackett from Yale coming and keynoting for our faculty in the area, in our ruler program. But then we also, Adam had reached out to our faculty, which we normally do, and also our larger community, to have different sessions for our faculty on social-emotional learning that's important to our kids. So it's really exciting to have our experts from our community be able to participate in our day with us. And we had a lot of adults who plan on participating, so we're excited about that. I wanted to take a moment to recognize all of our fall sports teams. We had a number of our teams making it pretty far in the sectional playoff games, and I know there are a few left in the mix, and I, but I find regardless of the record that our students have at the end of the season, our athletes always work hard, and that's something to be certainly proud of. And now, I'd like to welcome Josh Block and Adam Pease, who will give the board an update on our innovative spaces and the work that's been happening in them, as well as our one-to-one technology integration efforts in our elementary and middle schools. So thank you, Adam.
Thanks. Thanks, Dr. Ackerman. Good evening. My name is Adam Pease. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and we are happy tonight to update you on space and technology. We put together in one presentation, as the board is well aware, for years we've been exploring how redesigning space and rethinking space in our, for our instructional spaces, and also thinking about how technology can enhance and promote active learning across the district. We've been running a lot of pilots over the years and exploring in small ways how to change spaces to amplify learning. And so this year, you can really think of as a, really a big kind of moving past the pilots and thinking about a large-scale systematic rollout, and we wanted to give you an update on how that rollout is going. We thought it would be interesting, as was mentioned, we've been toying with different ways that we give our community and our Board of Education windows into our instructional program through the district, and we thought it would be neat. One of those windows is social media, so this presentation is a little bit different than presentations that we've had in the past in that we actually are using a social media lens to communicate most of this information. And what that does for us is it creates a level of authenticity and immediacy with regard to when this information was communicated out through that social media lens. So you're going to see, as Mr. Colwell Block walks us through the presentation, you're going to see quite a few references to social media and tweets, and even authors up there of those tweets with pictures along the way. So we thought it would be a neat way to explore the technology and the space. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Josh.
Hi, everyone. Josh Colwell Block, Director of Technology and Innovation. So we're going to take you, just like Adam said, a walk through our spaces and technology through a series of tweets that have been sent out by our faculty and our staff and our administration. The first slide just opened up is, we have opened up our global learning centers in our elementary schools. This is just a picture of our maker, one of our maker spaces and a small area where students can come and read. I'd like to say this is the neatest that I hope we ever see this space, as it should start to become messy pretty quickly. And here's another tweet from Ella Moskowitz about our West Orchard space that had opened that day. And I think the thing to notice in here is the fact that all of our furniture and a lot of the book stacks are on wheels so that we can reconfigure the space in a variety of ways for a lot of different learning modalities. So as we started working through our centers, we wanted to create a mission for it, and really the mission boils down to honoring natural curiosity provides opportunities for meaningful inquiry, innovation, and deeper understanding of the world. We really want our students to be thinkers, and our spaces in our elementary schools and the global learning centers really is starting to make that happen. In our maker space, the really creative spaces, Carolyn Elwood, our art teacher in Roaringbrook, on the first day that it was open, she brought kindergartners in there. And what she had found really amplified the space. Here were students that weren't just blowing bubbles, making art anymore, but they were learning about forces and magnitude and direction, and they were making marble drawings out of it to see what is the start in kindergarten of our physics curriculum. Here, there is a book that called Doug Unplugged, and the author had visited our Grafflin maker space. And one of the things in this book, it's about a robot that decides to unplug himself, and he doesn't want to be part of the world of computing anymore and learn anything connected to a computer. So he unplugs himself and sees the world. So here, the activity that students were doing, they were seeing the world from a lens of no connectivity and how they feel when they're unplugged and how they feel during play. And you could see, just being able to spread out in the global learning center and mad of Legos is something that was really creative and really a new way to think about space. So along with our space that we're building, we also are implementing digital technologies. And I want to point out that our digital technology goals, if you took the word "digital" out of these, they really are what good instruction looks like. Chapqua students being thoughtful learners, critical thinkers, preparing students to become collaborative citizens. And then the technology piece of it really starts to amplify the learning and helps us create value and efficiency of student learning time, helps us really use technology in ways that we couldn't do things in an analog environment. So we are super proud of the partnership that we have with the Chapqua Schools Foundation to be implementing iPads in our classrooms in third and fourth grades. Without them, the vision that we presented to you would not have been able to happen. And we have fully implemented, all students have access to an iPad in third and fourth grade. In K-1 right now, we've got 10 iPads per classroom. At the next board meeting, I'm going to present the second half of our smart bond, which is putting iPads in our second-grade classrooms and then using district funds to finish up our kindergarten first-grade classrooms. So the idea is that every student has access to a device when we need it and has, can quickly open up an app, quickly make a video, and I'm going to show you some things. And just quickly to show you, the iPad cases that we have are to make them much more versatile than just touchscreen, so that students have a keyboard, the keyboard can pop off, and they can walk around and do all sorts of activities, take video, go outside. One app that the students had downloaded for the fall that they were doing was analyzing leaves to see what types of tree it came from and what phase of the fall oxidation component that they have. And the app does all of that for them, and it's something we weren't able to do before, and it's a digital tool really helping and enhancing the learning. So what are we doing with that, with it now that we have them? Here's an example of CSaw is an application where students can create videos, take pictures, write, and almost build a digital portfolio that's going to be able to go with them from grade to grade, but also allows them to share with their peers and share with their teacher what they're doing. Here, a teacher had them building about adaptability, and they did pieces of, using their shape blocks, to build their own representation. So they did a physical build with it, and then the technology allowed them to record their reflection and record the thought process that they were going through and then share it with their students really quickly. So previously, students would have to walk around, they would have to present, but within 10 minutes, every student watched every other student's reflection that they had, and they were able to talk about how are they adaptable, how are they adaptable to change, and how would they build that and represent that. Our first graders, you could see at Roaringbrook from our principal and assistant principal tweeting out that they were using CSaw to record their reflections of a story they read. So they all read different stories, and they all got a synopsis of it, and all got a, what the student thought of that and the reflection of that, which then is helping them make decisions to choose books for themselves to read. And here, we see students in our maker space using our design process to build a tower, probably similar to when you all started building your cars. You did a pre-production and did a thinking process. So these students were able to draw on the iPads what they thought the best tower would be, and then do a physical build after it.
We could have used that.
Yeah. And then, we actually just had a demonstration of virtual reality goggles that can take those drawings and build them in 3D, and you could start to make changes and use physics to see how it's going to hold up before you do the physical build. And then finally, in our elementary school, we see students using Autobots, which are robots that we've had for a period of time, but now they have the ability to use it in a one-to-one environment, so that you could have three or four students building designs with it and programming it, and then testing it out together with the robot. And you could see the robot, we used to have to physically draw the lines on pads of paper, and we rolled them out on the carpet, and the kids would draw with markers. You could see in this tweet from Chris Idem, one of our librarians, they're just drawing it on the iPads now. So they're able to make changes quickly if it wasn't working as if they want to. One of the codes' colors is to speed up. Sometimes the markers didn't work right. Now the kids can change it just immediately. So it's that instant feedback that really changes the thought processes that students have, which is really fantastic. So you saw lots of tweets about teachers and students using iPads and digital technology in our new global learning centers. And we want to, one of our goals is to make sure that every teacher and every student utilizes the space over the course of the year. So yes, they're in there during their library time and their art time, but we want to make sure that the vision of the space, which is collaboration amongst teachers and collaborations amongst students, that we start to make that happen. So every teacher will be creating and doing two units in our global learning centers or our maker spaces, one by the end of January, one by the end of the year. The types of projects, you saw some maker projects, Science 21 or science curriculum, those labs can easily happen in those space and be amplified though in the space. Research, PBL activities, and then of course collaborative activities with other classes and special areas. Some examples of the projects we're going to see, in first grade, students are going to be looking at a foundational architecture unit and going through the Chapqua design process to construct gingerbread houses. So they're going to do a virtual build with technology and then do a physical build in that space and learn about structure. In third grade, they're going to be going through their Science 21 water filtration unit and start to build water filtration systems. And then in fourth grade, they're going to be doing inquiry and research in their Native American Studies unit. And that project, they're going to be doing research, technology, they're going to collaborate, they're going to, part of the thing that one teacher's looking into is how can they Skype with a school that's on a Native American reservation? So there's some sample projects, and there are projects that we're going to post in all grade levels that we're going to see. And then Christine announced something that was super exciting, at least for me as a child Nintendo user and as someone who still plays with their Nintendo Switch often. And I will say the new Mario Party is a great game for collaboration that just came out a few weeks ago. But we surreptitiously had, and Tony is agreeing with you.
It's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Josh, for that insight into your life.
So, but, so we sort of secretly had Nintendo come in with the Institute of Play to pilot some units on their Nintendo labo. Nintendo labo is cardboard units that students get to build. Our students built fishing rods out of cardboard and out of string. The Switch then has all sensors inside of it, so they stick just the controller inside of the fishing rod, and the students can virtually go fishing with it. The labos also have cars, robots, steering wheel that students can create, and really, and now they just built a coding platform. So if the students build it, if they build their little robot, they could start to program it on the Nintendo Switch. So they came in, we weren't allowed to tell anyone because it wasn't out yet. Now it's been publicized so we can, and we're looking to partner with them as, with the Institute of Play in getting more switches in there and starting to really learn this cutting-edge technology and how we can implement it in our curriculum in some really innovative ways that get kids thinking deeply about both physical and digital learning. Moving on to fifth grade. So fifth and sixth grade are part of our one-to-one initiative. We have given every fifth and sixth grader a Back Atlas device to take home with them. Quickly, I brought one with me. It is a laptop that turns into a tablet, so you can see students writing on them in their, in tablet form. We've seen students typing on them, and it really created a seamless environment between school and home, so that students are experiencing the same things both in class and out of class to really make efficient use of the learning time and the digital learning time. Here is by Dr. Fitzgerald on our rollout day, taking some pictures of students and myself. Here is our setup and us giving it. We all took a class and gave them out to kids and then trained them on them and did work with digital citizenship on the devices on the first day. And then, to talk about this, these devices are brand-new and just came out. Back is a company that is manufactured and created in Buffalo, New York, and there's been a little bit of a learning curve with us. So one of the things that we, that they learned and we learned is that the tips of these pens have basically all broken off, and they are replacing every single pen and every single tip for us. They just got 15,000 of them from their supplier come in yesterday, and they're going to ship them to us this week so that we get them. The other piece of it that we're learning is that there are some students that want some cases, and we're going to be working to get those, and they are, the cases are used with these by a medical company, so they need to just reformulate them for a school, so that our students can carry them around, which will make them a little bit more adorable. But they've been super responsive to any issues that we've had. But they've been super responsive to any issues that we've had and we really enjoy working with them. And we know that it's going to take a couple of weeks for everything to get working. This is the first time we've ever done this and we were really excited about it, but we know that we want to make sure everything works perfectly, but we also want to make sure that we're getting these out to our students and innovating in ways that we haven't before. We had a parent university about the Atlases and one of the things that I wanted to point out is that at that university, we had parents go through an activity where they wanted to see how many water drops fit on a penny. And then we were able to show how we use the digital technology to quickly summarize all of the data that they collected. So when we've done our learning walks, we just did one yesterday, we didn't see students with their heads in computers. We saw them collaborating with each other. We saw them using an application called PairDeck to put answers in so that a teacher can give instant feedback. We saw students drawing on a math problem and sharing it across with each other that they wouldn't have been able to do before. We saw students in Google Docs with each other, with two students working on the same document. What we've seen so far that really has enabled, the real win so far with these laptops is that students are just able to open them up, get started and get working, which our old model of laptop carts meant that a teacher had to sign out the cart, they had to get them, the kids had to log on to it and it took a significant amount of instructional time away from the learning. And now that has all but gone away basically, which is a really exciting piece of it. Our seventh and eighth grade plans, so now that fifth and sixth graders all have laptops, what that allows us to do is, one, free up all of the devices that were in the schools to only be available to seventh and eighth grade students, which gives us more laptops available for, to reallocate for students in seventh and eighth grade that need them. And we're also in the process of implementing Bring Your Own Device policy for seventh and eighth graders and we plan on creating some more parent nights about that to talk to the seventh and eighth grade parents about what that means to bring their own device to school. As we're doing this, our middle school steam centers are under construction in our, the steam center at Seven Bridges should be completed by the end of November. And we just got in all of our heavy machinery, which for me is like the real exciting part. The tweet that Adam has up there is the biggest CNC router I think I've ever seen. That picture doesn't do it justice. But we have the ability with that machine for kids to design things in really large scale and then start to cut them out and build things, whether it's on wood, on metal, on plastic. And we, the other picture there is of the laser cutter that was installed and all of that machinery is being installed now. And I said the first day that I was in there with the machinery, I was like, okay, now we need to really think about how are we going to use all of this? The kids are going to be so excited. What are the pieces that the students can use within their classes? And how can math be amplified by using this machinery? How in social studies can they start to do physical builds as part of the work in the curriculum that they're doing? And even the part, I have a tweet by Martin up there, we've got Lego blocks, which was a CSF grant, of students starting to do a physical build. And then we were thinking, well, now then how do we make that a more permanent build after we prototype? Now, all of this student work would not be possible without the incredible professional development opportunities that teachers have in Chappaqua. We had a professional learning day in October, which was our learning symposium, I'm going to call it 7.0. It was a day that teachers had real choice to learn what they felt was really important to learn as part of the initiatives that are in our school district. Adam somehow magically put this puzzle together of day where teachers can go to an Appy Hour where they can take the devices that they have and learn all about new applications that are available for our students. We had what was called Potluck PD where teachers can just share what they're doing in their classrooms for 15 minutes and then rotate around. We had regular long sessions. I know I had done one on personalized learning in mathematics and then on an application that allows students to record themselves and share with each other, similar to CSaw. Am I missing any components?
Just the professional projects.
Right. And we had teachers working on professional projects, so they were able to put a proposal together if they wanted to collaborate with their colleagues to work on a project that day and really have that full day. And the highlight of the day, we had Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who's an educational theorist, who gave us a keynote and then had conversations with our teacher. And it was pretty, it was the best professional learning day that I have had in Chappaqua in my time here. It was, it was spectacular. You could see, I know there's, you see three pictures of teachers engaged there, but we saw everybody engaged in learning throughout the entire day. And at the end of the day, at 2:35 on a Friday, we had an iLab full of teachers that did not want to leave, which I think is the true testament of a professional development day. Here we have another professional learning opportunity. As we talked about our global learning centers at our elementary schools and also remodeling it at our high school, our librarians have really started working together in professional and collaborative ways. And here they are, they're doing a book study called Hacking School Libraries, which are really innovative ways to think about what library media centers and what global learning centers could be. And here was an accidental use of space that turned out to be a really exciting way. One afternoon, we had two of our fellowships, our SEL fellows, Social Emotional Learning fellows, were in the Grafflin Makerspace. The Active Learning Leadership fellows were in the Global Learning Center. And then the tweet by Lisa Altam, one of our staff developers, is three teachers on a learning team that sort of said, well, where are we going to work? We've got all these people in here. And they found a little corner nook in there working and we all got to work side by side together and sort of co-mingle with each other and have conversations across professional development groups. And the work that the Alf fellows were doing started influencing the work that that learning team was doing and vice versa. It just created some great conversations and just having these flexible spaces was, what did it. And I think we want to now purposefully do that with our teachers and plan professional development so that multiple groups that are doing professional development can be in the same spaces and start planning interactivities with those groups. We'll move on to Adam about.
Yeah, so as we close up the presentation, we thought it was important, although it was a presentation on technology and space, to just talk for a minute about the importance of leadership development. Things are moving very quickly in education when it comes to instructional practice, innovative classrooms, instructional design, curriculum design, et cetera. So we thought it was important, excuse me, to share that we're really making sure that we align our leadership development, the professional development that we provide for our district leaders, our building leaders across the district so that they are well prepared to lead, lead in these dynamic spaces and make sure that our teachers can continue to support students in these really exciting initiatives. So we put a slide up there and many people, we use a model really where we bring in outside expertise, but we also rely heavily on internal expertise. So the idea that there's a lot of talent in that leadership team and we have opportunities to share that talent across the team and intentionally design structures that model and mirror the kinds of things that we'd like to see happening in our classrooms. So we're really using that leadership team to push forward when it comes to the instructional model. And one of the nice things for us is that our leadership team is the size of a classroom in terms of the numbers. We have her right in the low 20s. So we really, it gives us the opportunity to model a lot of things, you know, structures that we use in our classrooms with the leadership team so they can then go out and support our faculty and our staff. So as we bring this to a close, we did want to just mention, looking forward, we are really doing a lot of deep thinking about our five priorities for the district. We kind of have the bookends and I think appropriately placed on the left side is instructional space to amplify learning and then on the right, instructional technology as a tool to personalize learning are two of our five priorities. So we continue to remain focused on those five in moving forward. I think it's important to mention, I don't want to start to list people by name and groups by name, but this is a really like an entire school community effort, you know, but you saw the slides and I think whether it's a supportive community, the parent groups, the CSF, the list is just so long, the professional development team, the teacher leaders, building leaders, district leaders, there's just a lot of people that are really making this work happen. So Josh and I are fortunate to be able to kind of relay this good news, but we're really backed by a tremendous community that supports this kind of innovation and we appreciate it.
And I think, Dad, so we've talked a lot about over the past few years, the planning for all of us and we're starting to see both the technology, the physical space transformations, and also the curricular and student learning transformations that we hope for, we're seeing happening, which is extremely exciting after all this planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Any questions?
I have a quick question, Josh. You said CSaw is multi-level. Is it K-12 or K...
You know, it could be K-12. We have it in our elementary schools right now. We were thinking that it's an elementary-style program. If you looked at the look and feel of it, it looks very elementary. As we start to think about portfolios for students in upper grades, I think we'd start to look at how Canvas can use that, provide that functionality.
Just because they take it with them from grade to grade.
Yeah, so all the work that the students would do in kindergarten will follow them into first grade for them to look back and they could start to file things and start to put things so they could really reflect upon what is their learning. And I think like one of the things that CSaw has shown us is of videos that students were creating of themselves reflecting in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. And like imagine how powerful the tool that is for a kid when they're leaving fourth grade to see what they were doing in kindergarten. And you could almost see, like if you pick a strand of learning, like that physics that we started in kindergarten, if they start to think about that in first grade and second grade and as they start advancing their thinking, and they could look back to see what they learned in kindergarten.
Instead of having to go back to the box in the attic and have a look.
Yeah.
So, and the other question, what's the learning curve for the students to understand the platform in order to be productive?
I mean, it's practically none, right? So we've walked into classes, handed out a device, had them open a device in all grade levels, and they were cruising faster than we thought they would be. You know, it was funny, when we did the Back Atlas handout day and the plan for it, we had planned the digital citizenship component, the logging on component. I realized that we were done with it by halfway through the period and we had some reflections that students were doing, which was good and they got to really enjoy some of the features of the program. But it's been really, it's been, it's been really good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to just make just a few, a few comments. I think by your presentation, it's very obvious that all the new technology is not just technology for technology's sake. I think that's the fear in many places and that's what happens, but I think this is a product of a lot of background work, a lot of professional learning that takes place in our district, which is not necessarily typical. And I think that's what's very special about our district. The professional learning is what makes classroom learning so effective. And once again, I want to thank the community for supporting the bond that made all of the new spaces possible. And it's really in recognition of the fact that content learning is no longer sufficient in this world that we live in. Everyone has access to information and what we're trying to do is to build skills and competencies in our students that are really necessary in the 21st century so they're being creative, they're being innovative, they are working collaboratively, doing a lot of critical thinking and problem solving and learning to communicate and work with each other. And that's really what will, what will lead to success. So those, the new spaces and the new technology is really promoting all of those new competencies that are really necessary at this point. So I just want to commend you for all of the work that you're doing, commend the staff and the administration for working not just with our students, but with each other to keep us on the cutting edge of what, what needs to happen in public education. So thank you once again for all the work.
All right, so before, thank you, Josh and Adam, for a comprehensive presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for the enthusiasm, Josh. It's like infectious, it really is.
So I put a logo slide in there.
So before we move to the actuary report, I just want to finish up my portion of the evening. So I'd like to mention two things. The first is on Monday, we'll be hosting our Spelling Bee that benefits the Greeley Scholarship Fund at 7:00 PM in Horace Greeley High School and we have a number of teams participating, both student and adult. So we're looking forward to this event, so hopefully, there is Team Chow, it's right here. We're going to do our best to represent the district office.
Okay.
We're really excited, really excited about it, so. So I just wanted to mention that in case anyone is free Monday night and they'd be able to participate because it's a really great cause for our, for our families. And then the other thing is we've, we've landed on our logo, so I just wanted to loop back to our previous conversation. So this will be our new logo on our website and we can always make adjustments in the future, but we're going to try to roll this out based on feedback from all of you throughout the process. And I'd like to thank Jane and Vicky for working specifically with Adam and Tony and I to give feedback to Bosie's and then ultimately our own faculty member Zach Arnold to put the finishing touches on our, on our new representation. So I wanted to thank everyone for their feedback and this is one of the byproducts of the Communication Committee, so thank you very much. So Warren, go ahead.
All right, so I'd like to introduce Michael Frank. Michael is the president of Aquarius Capital, has been the actuary for our school district since the inception of GASB 4345. Michael, won't you probably sit down if you want?
Well, you can sit over there.
Yes. We're John's here. He was president of New York State Actuarial Association and is a professor at Columbia University. The district, along with all other municipalities in the country, need to comply with the new GASB 75 rule and since it substantially changed the district's net position view, the Audit Committee has invited Michael to present to the Board of Education and Community to explain the impact of this new GASB change, that the new GASB change has on the district. All the district's GASB reports are on the district website. We've asked Michael to prepare not just the GASB report, but also provide 79 additional scenarios to illustrate the sensitivities of the discount rates and healthcare costs.
Well, thank you for having me. I don't know if you have a clicker to change someone?
Challenge our clicker?
I guess John will be the clicker.
Yeah, I'm the clicker.
John's your personal clicker.
Well, the first thing I want to say is thank you for the invite and also, we just had a great presentation on the 21st century and where technology is going. This discussion is going to be more what's going on in the 20th century and how it's impacting the 21st century. Excellent.
We're going to go back to 19th century.
To some extent.
Historical perspective tonight, that's going to be tremendous.
To some extent, we are going far, very far back. What the discussion tonight is about GASB 75. GASB 75 is the reporting of retiree health benefits. If we rewind the clock back to the early 90s, privately-held corporations and publicly-traded companies had to report their financials, including benefits guaranteed to retirees under what we refer to as FAS 106. Government entities in the mid 1990s, actually going into 2007, 2008, were required to start reporting these benefits under Government Accounting Standards Board Number 45. Well, this is the first year for the district with what's called a conversion from GASB 45 to GASB 75. So with GASB 45, there's an old liability out there. When I say old and I talk about 20th century, there's retirees that are on the books today that have retired before I was born. So just to kind of give you the magnitude, there's individuals that retired in the late 50s, in the mid 1960s, that retired before I was born and there are benefit promises to them dating back many, many years ago. And what you'll find is the majority of the retirees actually retired in the 20th century that are on the books today. So I highlight that because we're doing an evaluation of benefits of what the obligations are today, but those obligations have been on the books going back 50-plus years. They just haven't been recognized until 10 years ago. Next slide. So with the Chappaqua School District, when we think about the timing of the change, you know, GASB put out dates that start at June 15, 2017, and June 15, 2016. Those are kind of the magic dates. If your fiscal year starts after those dates, you would have to start reporting under GASB 74 and GASB 75. Since the district doesn't have a separate fund established for, for retiree health benefits, there's no GASB 74 reporting. And it's not that the district isn't trying to be prudent, it's just that there's no laws in place today in the state of New York for school districts to start funding these benefits. So it's not that the So, it's not that the district isn't being prudent, there's just not a, a vehicle for them to start that process. So, GASB 75 is very similar to GASB 45. The exercise of GASB 45 is valuing all the people that have retired in the district that are still alive today, collecting benefits, as well as people who are active today that might retire tomorrow or 30 years from tomorrow. So, it's an exercise of gathering a lot of data, eligibility information, cost information, what retirees are projected to, you know, contract, looking at all the collective bargaining agreements, and you have a lot of them. And as those agreements change, depending on what tranche a retiree is in, will depend on which agreement they comply to. Two interesting things that I'll highlight about the district that you don't normally see. Number one is most districts do not put their GASB 45 reports on their website. It's actually a rarity. And I would say of the clients that I deal with, less than 1% of those clients put their reports up on the internet. So, that's an interesting piece. The second one is collective bargaining agreements. You typically don't see collective bargaining agreements. So, when I start looking at these valuations, it's very easy for me to get, you know, the information, because it's out there, it's very transparent. There's a lot of information to get through and code through, but it's very transparent. Next slide. So, I know the numbers, uh, you know, since I'm an actuary, you know, I have to bring some numbers to the meeting, otherwise I wouldn't feel like I'm doing my job. The district has approximately 1,000 lives, 995 between active and retirees. If you look at the population, the last valuation reflected 600 actives and 395 retirees. And again, many of those retirees date back to the 1990s, 1980s, and going all the way back into the late 50s, early 1960s. The average age of the population is consistent with other school districts. It's, it's about 48, and the retirees are about 74. And of that population, 13.7% are pre-65. The reason why pre-65 is important is because we have Medicare. So, once you become Medicare-eligible, there's benefits that you get from the government, and then the medical plans they get from the district are secondary to what they get from Medicare. The average years of service is about 12 years, pretty typical that you'll find in a school district. And within that average of 12 years, you're going to have people that are in the district 30 years, and people that are in the district for 30 minutes. They've just been hired. So, you're just going to have a different mix. And of that population, of the 600 that are working today, when this valuation was done, 179 of them are eligible to retire, which means they can go to the business office tomorrow and say, today's going to be my last day, I want to retire. And there's a vested obligation for those individuals. The remaining individuals are not vested in their benefits, so if they leave tomorrow, they wouldn't be eligible for a benefit. So, when we do these valuations, we have to make assumptions on the percentage of the population that's going to retire that year versus the percentages that are continued working, and, and then those that are potentially going to withdraw or terminate.
Using mean average? What's that?
Using mean average?
We're using statistical calculations. Like, the numbers I'm showing you are averages, but each, thank you, each individual is valued separately in a model and through the program. So, we're calculating, if they're 24-year-olds, what's the probability that they live to age 25, continue to work in the district, not be disabled, until, and we project that out 220 years, based on the tables. And if you look at the liabilities, and this is really important, and one of the things I wanted to highlight with GASB, now, the liability has been there forever. It just has never been recorded, never been reported, never been calculated before 10 years ago. So, if you think about what the obligations are on the books, there's approximately an obligation of $17 million in liability as of year-end June 30 of 2017, but that present value of that liability was well over $100 million. But the way GASB 45 was implemented in 99% of all municipalities, schools, towns, cities, housing authorities, utility companies, they would amortize that liability over 30 years. So, if you're thinking of things from an investment perspective, you buy a building, you amortize the asset over 30 years. In this situation, you have a liability that's been there, and you're amortizing the liability over 30 years. So, now, the change from GASB 45 to GASB 75 has a material impact on what the numbers affect on your financials, because you're no longer amortizing over that 30-year period, where the district was, you know, as of 6/30/17, we're nine years into their amortization of 30. Under GASB 75, they now have to reflect the liability in full. So, now, you're taking that 100-plus million-dollar number, and you're immediately recognizing it. But then, GASB also made some rule changes, and some of it was consistent to the way pensions are valued. So, when you think about how pensions were valued, there were changes in GASB requirements to create more consistency. I'm not necessarily saying it's more accurate, it's just, it's more of a consistent methodology. So, there's less subjectivity on discount rate. So, discount rate, your present value of your liabilities, is now based on a 20-year municipal bond. So, GASB came up with a methodology. But within that methodology, it's kind of gray, because there's five indices that you can use.
Because a couple of years ago, when Greg Bresner was on board, we had a lot of discussions of what discount rate to use and what, even though we didn't record it or publish it, it was just for our own identification, but it seemed that that was a big number. So, now, let's see, have that standardized, I guess, right?
It, it, it standardizes the volatility. The reality is, it's, it's an indices. So, with the true discount rate and present value, there, there's a lot of subjectivity of what's the right, you know, discount rate to use. Now, this is not a funded benefit like a pension plan. So, when you look at pension plans, their discount rates are north of 7%. So, it becomes important to understand, like, when we talk about discount rates, the larger the discount rate, the smaller the liability, because it's a present value. But then, the reverse is as you lower the discount rate, you're raising the liability. So, with the move going to 20-year bond rates, for the district, as an example, went from 4.5% discount rate to 3.7% discount. So, that was one of the material changes. A second change was the, the actuarial cost method that's used, on how you value someone from the time they start working to the time they retire. So, the industry standard was something that was called projected unit credit. So, it pretty much is a fixed amortization schedule, where now, they're using what's called the entry-age normal. Now, projected unit credit was used by more than 80% of actuarial firms in valuations. And GASB changed the requirement to be more on a fixed percentage of, percentage of payroll, entry-age normal methodology. And not to get into great detail of it, but what it is, it's, you're taking a liability and rather than amortizing it or projecting it into the future over a fixed period, you're kind of front-ending a lot of that liability. So, what it does is it, it kind of accelerates the liability in the earlier years. If you look at the numbers, you'll see a big jump from the prior valuation to the current valuation. And what I'll share with you is not a lot changed. What changed is how we had to value things. So, we had to value a lower discount rate because it became prescribed. We had to value a different actuarial cost method, which drove up the liability which was prescribed. And then, the third thing I wanted to share is there's something under GASB called an implicit subsidy. So, right now, the district is in a community-rated consortium plan called the Department of Northern Westchester Health Benefits Consortium. There's 14 school districts. The district makes up approximately, roughly speaking, about 10 to 12% of the lives. It's in a community-rated environment. Now, when you're doing valuations of this magnitude, there's something that's called an implicit subsidy. Can you go back a couple of slides? Yeah, that one. So, if you think about the average age of your, your retiree population, I don't have all the reports in front of me, but the average age of your pre-65 retirees are in their early 60s. The average age of your actives are 48. So, if you kind of blend it all together, you're going to have an average age of about 50. So, what we're required to do is, as you get older, unfortunately, your health deteriorates. So, actuarially speaking, you cost more as you age. So, we now have to, even though you're paying a fixed community rate, whether you're a 23-year-old track star working at the school district, or a 64-year-old unhealthy teacher, it's still the same number that the district has to pay. But we have to go through the process of aging it, and that's what we refer to as an implicit subsidy, that the older population is being subsidized by the younger population, so we need to value that, and we must get forward. So, that becomes just an important understanding, because now, it's the methodology of how the calculations are done. So, this is going to be probably one of the biggest jumps that you'll see. Now, when I say the reality is not a lot has changed, there have been things that have changed over time, but most of it has kind of changed to the better. You just don't see it right now in your financials. So, when I think back of when these benefits were first promised, and look at contracts that are going back to turn of the century, what you're charging your retirees today is about 2.5 to 3 times, as a percentage of premium, what you used to charge. So, you're charging them a lot more, eligibility to get the benefit is a lot harder. So, there are some mechanisms in place right now. So, it's not as easy to get that same retirement benefit at the magnitude as it was many years ago. So, that's an important aspect. A second thing that's an important aspect is you're part of a consortium plan, and when we do these valuations, if you were part of a collective bargaining plan that ties how collective bargaining goes around benefits, so I use the New York State Empire Plan. You, as a school district, if you were in the New York State Empire Plan, you would have no control over your destiny on what the benefits that you're getting. It's, if you buy it, this is the benefit you're getting. But when you're buying it through the consortium, the consortium, where the school district is one of 14, sits in a governance group, and then decide, what do the benefits look like next year? I'm a consulting actuary for the consortium, so it's an important aspect to understand, because part of, you know, your future healthcare projections, and we go back to Greg Bresner's 72 or 78 or 79 scenarios, it was a combination of discount, healthcare inflation, and retiree contributions. One of the things you have in your control is plan design change, which helps limit healthcare inflation. So, historically, you've had single-digit rate increases every year from your insurance company, because when experience is not running well, you're able to change your plan design in order to take certain benefits away. Not when I say take benefit away, raise a copay. So, instead of it costing X, it's now X plus $10 for every office visit. And I'm not saying that's going to solve everything in the world, but it's a way to kind of mitigate some of that present value of liability. So, this is just a grid that just gives you kind of the highlights of the two benefits. I think the key takeaways are, you're no longer amortizing and bleeding out a liability, you're showed in in full. The discount rate, the actuarial cost method, and the way you accrue expenses are now a prescribed methodology. There's also more disclosure requirements. You, as a district, have already been disclosing all these things, pretty much, so it's not, you know, you've been disclosing not only what we refer to as sensitivity of plus and minus 1% trend, plus or minus 1% discount rate, you have, we've heard to the Greg Bresner scenarios that are 79 different sensitivities. And, and you're disclosing all the assumptions, you know, so that anyone in the community can actually look at it. Immediate questions that come to mind? Wow, it's a big number, you know, how does that going to impact us when we're getting a bond rating? We're raising money for, for lending, whatever it might be. You're in the same boat as every municipality in the United States, every school district in the United States, because you're a July 1, June 30 fiscal year. The July 1, 17, to June 30, 18 fiscal year is the first year every school district in the state of New York is implementing. So, that big liability jump that all of you have experienced is, it's, it's something that everyone is dealing with. And I can tell you, the rating agencies are still, haven't digested GASB 45 from 10 years ago. So, now that they're going to have to recognize and understand GASB 75, it's a challenge for the district. Next slide. I don't know if anybody has any questions? I know it's not as an exciting topic as the 21st century.
No, but thank you. It's a tough subject to, to break down, and you actually make it really understandable, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the important thing, I just want to add a couple of words, is that important thing is what Michael talked about, is that for, for our school district, we were doing two very important things. One is actually, every time we have a negotiation with contract negotiation, every employee is going to increase their healthcare insurance contribution every year. That's this, the, the, our goal. And the second part is that with this round of negotiations, we actually increased vastly the vesting period. So, that, these two things really will help our number. And then, also, Michael talked about with the plan, we have a commitment every year that we are change, you know, make some changes to the plan to, to have more, more participation from the employees. So, these are the important...
But the plan is good too, because we've got a large enough, large enough population in the plan to sort of balance things out.
That's correct. So, we are in a better shape than, let's say, a school district that is self-insured.
Self-insured.
And we, we know one of our neighboring districts ran into trouble with that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes. Yes, right. Good.
Okay, committee reports. I would say from the Audit Committee, we met, we met, we had our external auditor last week, the last meeting, and we satisfied that requirement, and then we asked Michael to come in. So, we have one item on the agenda to talk about tonight. I think it's 5.14 regarding Audit Committee. That's a whole number of things after this year for this fiscal. Communications?
Not at this time. You saw the logo?
Right, and we have an upcoming meeting in a couple of weeks, so we...
We have a meeting on the calendar.
And then, we had been talking about sending out a new communication mechanism instead of highlights, so we have a draft, and I've sent that to Vicky and Jane today. So, the community should see a new form of how we're sending out our monthly updates within the next week. So, that's exciting.
We're looking at some policy changes on Thursday, or we have a Policy Committee meeting on Thursday.
Right.
2:00. Facilities, Jeffrey or Helen?
The facilities meeting, the next one on the calendar is November 15. And one of the topics that we've taken from the previous meeting is to discuss the, the temperature situation in the schools on very hot days and evaluate options such as air conditioning. We also received a letter from the PTA in support of that effort, so we'll be figuring out how to integrate that as well.
Okay, great. Any of these committees?
Nothing to report at this time.
Great. Thank you. So, we'll go to a public comment period. We welcome public comments. In respect for each other's time, we ask that those comments be held to three minutes. Ward members can be contacted either by phone or by email if you have anything else to tell us. So, if anyone would like to stand up and speak, please come up and state your name.
You got the top of the, okay.
You can tilt the top.
Hold on, David's coming. Hold on, hold on a second.
I could just like...
There you go.
All right, perfect.
Is he a little too tall?
Yep, yep. Okay, I'm Jordan Klein, and I'm going to be talking about my petition to rename the high school. So, thanks for this opportunity. I'm a senior here at Horace Greeley. And every day in this building, we're encouraged to think critically and apply what we learn in our lives, what we learned in school to our lives in our community's life. So, something I learned in AP US History actually brought me here today. I learned that Horace Greeley ran against the reelection of Ulysses S. Grant in 1872, and learned that he said some actually very questionable things that, that bothered me. On a platform that was mainly about removing the voter protections of Grant, voter protections Grant had extended to newly freed slaves who were being terrorized by the Ku Klux Klan. So, Horace Greeley ran against that. That surprised me, since Greeley is famous for being an outspoken champion of emancipation. So, I did more research on my own and discovered that unfortunately Greeley said some horrible things. Here's a letter he wrote to the head of a welfare agency calling blacks a, quote, worthless race. The fact that it's a private letter tells me that he really meant it. Here's an article he wrote for the newspaper, the New York Tribune, calling most of the blacks elected to the South Carolina Legislature, quote, ignorant and barbarous. In the same paper, he called China... In the same paper, he called Chinese people uncivilized, unclean, and filthy beyond all conception. And said that every Chinese woman is a prostitute. You see those italics under every? That tells me he really meant it. He also thought that giving women the right to vote would be unwise and unnatural, as he says in his front page editorial. Horace Greeley's words would get a student at Horace Greeley High School suspended. Once I heard them, they were hard to forget. I thought it was important that our community hear them too. Now, people who've studied Greeley longer than I have say we need to understand the context of his statements. That basically Greeley's vocal support for abolition gives him a free pass for everything else he said and did, no matter how despicable. And let's be clear, it was considered ugly at the time. Thomas Nass cartoons like these depict Greeley as doing the bidding of the Klan and treading on African-Americans. In this letter, a fellow abolitionist shocked by his change of heart called him a quote, "a tool of Southern despots." Greeley was roundly rejected in the election of 1872, winning only six states, all of them in the South. And the suffragist leader Susan B. Anthony was so disgusted by Horace Greeley that she got herself arrested for casting a symbolic and illegal vote for his opponent, Grant, in the 1872 election. Come on, life is not a SportsCenter highlight reel. We're only the one handed catchers count. We've all got to be judged by how we played the whole game. Luckily, the official philosophy of this school district is to instill quote, "a willingness thoughtfully to reassess the theories and judgments of the past in the revealing light of heightened knowledge." Okay.
Hold on, I move with giving another minute.
I will second.
Okay, you have one more minute.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm in favor.
Wait just a minute.
Okay. So more than 130 of us have reassessed. The petition respectfully requests that this board convene a special committee to explore choosing a new name for the school we love because we love it and what it stands for. And because what we call people and what we call public spaces matters more today than it has ever before. In closing, let's not be trapped by a choice made back in 1928 when the original school, which is now Bell, was built on Horace Greeley's land. Let's make the right choice for 2018 and engage our entire community in the process. Let's fix the name and in doing so, illustrate and honor what's best about Chapel Wall. Thank you.
Give you a job.
Good evening. My name is Cassie Warden. I'm the executive director of the Newcastle Historical Society. The Historical Society is willing to be involved in the discussions regarding Jordan Klein's petition to change the name of Horace Greeley High School. As a reformer who supported the anti-slavery movement, women's rights to property, employment, and public speaking opportunities, workers' rights, and educational reform, Greeley strove to better American society through his words and actions, through his use of freedom of speech and freedom of press in his newspaper, the New York Tribune. Greeley's record as a champion of black civil rights is undisputed. In the 1850s, he was one of the founders of the Republican Party, which at that time was principally devoted to opposition against the spread of slavery. He was a major supporter of the Emancipation Proclamation and the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments. And in 1872, part of his campaign slogan was impartial suffrage. Greeley advocated for women's rights to property and inheritance as well as equitable employment and public speaking opportunities. Greeley's views on women's suffrage is a bit more complicated. He expressed his views clearly and succinctly in a personal letter of 1867, which is found in our collection. "You ask me for reasons for or against female voting. I can give neither because I hold it a question for women only. Whenever a majority of our women shall indicate their deliberate choice to be enfranchised, I shall feel bound by my adhesion to the great fundamental principle that governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed to work and to vote for their enfranchisement." He is not a man without flaws, however, and more research is still needed to determine the context of the statement attributed to Greeley in the petition. As the local Historical Society, we have started researching the quotes and statements in the petition by analyzing several primary sources that we have identified. However, this research will not be complete until we have been given the opportunity to also review the sources used to write the petition, of which we will request from Mr. Klein. For this will be the only way to accurately present an unbiased and thorough historical narrative related to the topic. Horace Greeley High School was named to commemorate a man who regularly used the First Amendment to its fullest potential and who consistently fought to uphold the American principles of liberty and freedom as they continued to evolve in the 19th century. Today, our local community can utilize the places that carry his name to negotiate the tension between history and memory by remembering the turbulent past of our nation and to recognize how historic figures like Horace Greeley helped American society to navigate times of conflict through the spreading of information, different perspectives, and ideas. The Newcastle Historical Society has a trove of historical information related to Horace Greeley, and we look forward to serving as a resource.
Good evening. I'm Gray Williams. And I am the Newcastle Town Historian. I would like to say also that I attended the Horace Greeley School kindergarten from third grade through ninth grade. My daughters, three daughters, went through the whole system from kindergarten to graduation. We have a long and very affectionate relationship with the school district. The petition to remove the name of Horace Greeley from the high school raises very serious issues about our most famous former citizen with implications that go far beyond the name of a particular school. There are a number of other Greeley names in our community, place names, business names, so forth. And of course, we have a very large and prominent statue of Greeley erected in tribute to his memory back in 1914. The point is that the allegations in this petition, the direct charge that Greeley was a bigot, the implication that he despised blacks and opposed women's rights to vote, are so completely at odds with a long and well-documented record of Greeley's life and career as a whole. He was well-known as a champion of black civil rights, founder of the Anti-Slavery Republican Party before the war, a supporter of the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments and the Reconstruction Acts after it. And he was also known as a champion of women's rights, their property rights in particular. He didn't oppose their right to vote per se, but thought it was unwise to press for that right until there was clear evidence that a majority of women really wanted it. So the Historical Society and the Town Historian, we work together, but we are separate, have been researching the documents and other evidence presented in the petition in order to establish their origins and accuracy. We hope by this effort to assist not only the Board of Education, but also the public in general in the consideration of the proposal. However, our report is not complete and it will not be complete unless we can examine the other documentation that Jordan Klein has assembled in support of the petition. We would very much like to see it and hope that he'll share it with us. Meanwhile, let me say that we are guided in our work by certain basic principles. First, that isolated statements by an individual may not represent that person's views or actions as a whole. Second, that isolated statements or specific words and phrases contained in them may not accurately represent the context in which they're contained. And third, that statements and sentiments attributed to an individual by others may not be accurate or reliable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Klein. I'm Jordan Klein's dad, even though I'm much shorter. I want to first of all thank Dr. Williams and the Historical Society. They were helpful in the research that Jordan was doing over the summer. In fact, Dr. Williams steered Jordan to some of the sources that he then used in supporting this. So not to speak for my son because I've learned, as anyone who has teenagers knows, not to speak for your children. But I'm sure Jordan would be happy to share those documents and those sources with anybody who's interested. I think it'd be a really helpful exercise for everyone. And I just hope that the school board will agree that it's a good idea to form a committee to further explore this, which is really the purpose of the petition. And clearly, there's a lot of work that we can do together to sort of understand not only those words, which were written and were spoken, but also to understand the context so that the community as a whole can come to grips with how we all feel about that name adorning the threshold of this school and what that implies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comment? Okay, we'll close the comment session. We added a statement to the public comment period that after the period, the board might have a discussion amongst themselves. Does anyone have anything to add to this? Jeffrey? If you guys are waiting for me, I have no interest in pursuing this further. If that's what you're waiting, if that's the comment section you're asking.
My view is that we approach information we get always with an open mind, listening to both sides, all sides equally. I would personally like to get more information. I think a question has been brought to our attention. And we have people in the district who are historians and who have looked into the background, into Horace Greeley's background in a very in-depth way. And what I'm hearing is that they would like to work with the student who has brought information to our attention. And we greatly appreciate that. At this point in time, I would be inclined to let that process develop. I don't know how the rest of the board feels in charging the district with this project. Up until this time, this has been a student's effort. And now members of the community have taken it up.
So I agree with a lot of what you've just said, Vicky. However, I don't know that I've seen anything tonight that makes me feel like we want to make an investment of time and money on the district's behalf. But I would be very interested to hear how the further research does play out that the Historical Society and the Historian can do with Jordan.
I would be interested. You know, we always applaud students who take initiative and advocate for things that they deeply believe in and do research to further something that they can bring to the school board. I also appreciate what we heard from the Town Historian and this Historical Society. But what stuck with me was the issue that it's a larger issue than just Greeley High School. So there's a lot of issue of our town and our history and the name Horace Greeley and everything from Greeley Hardware to South Greeley Avenue to, you know, a number of other things. So I always like to get information. My struggle is school-specific resources when I think it's a bigger issue. So if it's a bigger issue, if it's the town and it's, I'm trying to find a way that we get more information that could be brought to us and the town, et cetera, as opposed to it being school-specific to Greeley. That's my only question in terms of a resource issue.
I mean, someone said, I think it was Mr. Klein the younger or the taller. I mentioned a community-wide discussion was something that was had. I mean, I've done my own research into this, just asking the community, getting many letters from alumni, everyone from the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, and 2000s. I have not heard one person who wanted to change the school name, the high school name. I think the research that Jordan's done is wonderful that, you know, you get an idea from a class that we teach and you take that and you go forward. But at this point, I guess my other question would be if we've had the sources, then why has the Historical Society not gotten those sources yet? So that leads me to understand that, I mean, I think we have more work to do. I don't think it's anything our district should invest in right now. I think we have many other things we're doing. And to set up a committee or to invest our administration's time to do this is not in our best interest, sort of like I think what Jeffrey was saying. So I would be inclined to say that we don't move forward with this. If the Historical Society wants to investigate this more, that's up to them.
Can I share something?
Yes.
First, I want to thank Jordan for presenting tonight and presenting a lot of information in a very short period of time. And I'd also like to thank the Historical Society and the Town Historian for coming. So just in reflection, you know, community members have concerns all the time and they bring them forward. And that's part of the process here in our district. And I think that what we need to think about is the weight of those concerns. That has to be considered. And how concerned is our community with the name of our high school at this time? Now, based on the feedback that I've received, I would say that the level of concern about the name of our high school is not that high. In fact, the only feedback I've received is asking us not to consider changing the name. So at this time, I'm not sure our process is appropriate on the district's behalf based on the level of information and the level of concern our community has regarding the name of this high school. Of course, that could change if more or different information is presented. But right now, at this moment, I'm not receiving the level of concern that would possibly warrant us taking on a committee to look at the name of this high school and actually receiving opposite information to that effect.
And that's what I was saying.
So I just want you to consider that.
We should be investing that time right now.
But perhaps in the future, if there's a different consideration, then we could take that up at that time. But at this point, the information that I'm receiving from the community is actually the opposite request.
Agreed.
I would just like to mention a related concern. I would personally would like to see time invested in a focus on bigotry in general in our society now, in the present. Change of a name is something to look at. Again, I would like to be open-minded. But there is bigotry, prejudice, and racism in our society right now. And personally, I would like to see use of focus and energy on that. If we are really focused on looking at this issue and changing the name of a building, I'm not, I don't want to minimize that in any way. But if you are concerned about prejudice and racism, I suggest that there's a lot of work to be done in that department in our current state of affairs. So we can also look at that if there is concern about that.
May I make another comment?
Yeah.
I was actually a history major way back when I used to cut my hair and go to college. So you had your hair here when you were in college and longer here? I'm in the process of wanting a bed here, so. Yeah. One of the questions I grapple with then, and I don't have an answer to, is do you judge a person or an action by its time or by current standards? I mean, I think there's great arguments to be made for both. And I think you can only look at history, you know, from your own lens. I think you also have to consider the times in which history occurred and what the standards were then also. I don't have an answer to that, but.
I think that's a constant issue that we grapple with all the time. And I like hearing the information. I like to know if there are people that we revere. I'd like to see the full picture. I think that's just a very present issue in our society right now. So I think that we need the information. I just think the bigger issue is whether it applies. it applies to our school or town and what we do with the information. So I'm always open to receiving information. It's just a question of, once you get that information, what is to be done with it? That's my thing. But I want the information. So if there's more information, you know, between the Clines of Historical Society or whatever, I'm happy to receive it and look at it. I just think, at this point, it's tough to devote a committee to that until we get some information that we can get a full picture as to how to allocate our resources.
Thank you very much.
Actually, can I just say that I just want to commend Jordan for his courage, standing up for what he believes in, regardless of whether we're taking action or not on it? It takes a lot of courage as a senior in high school to do that. I'm not sure I would have.
Sitting up for conviction, just standing up in this meeting?
It's very difficult to come up and speak in front of that microphone. And so we applaud him for doing that. That's a tough thing to do.
Okay.
I'd also just like to share for the audience, we're going into our business portion of the meeting, so people need to go home and study. This would be the time to do that.
Take a two-second break?
David will go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for coming back, and we'll proceed with the meeting. Approvals and ratifications. Do I have a motion to approve item 3.1 except minutes of November, of October 11, 2018?
I'll send it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I wasn't here, so I would abstain. Well, I will, I can approve.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept 4.1?
I move 4.1.
Second?
I'll second 4.1.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have many questions.
Okay.
And it all comes down to the first three or four sentences here. About the substitution?
Tony, go ahead.
Yes.
Could you, maybe you could ask the questions on you, because you don't have to repeat yourself. $125 per day, is that more or less than what we're paying? Does that include benefits?
It does not include benefits.
Do they get benefits?
They do not get benefits. No.
And is this, these people are assigned to a specific building, so that if we have a call, need for a substitute in Building 1, but you're not on that list, you don't go to Building 1?
So what we have, what we're experiencing is a shortage of subs in our district and locally, certainly throughout the county as well. So we're trying to find a way to create a pool of candidates in our sub pool that we know will come here consistently and be present to fill the vacancies that we have on any given day, which can be, if we have 40 vacancies a day, 40 absences a day for different reasons, there are times in the morning where half of those are unfilled. We don't have subs for them, and people are scrambling to fill those positions. What we did is surveyed the, my counterparts in the county to find out if they have positions like this that are building-specific. So subs who've come to a building about four times a week consistently to serve as a constant in terms of subbing. And so that's where this new rate is being, that's why this new rate is being recommended. So we have building-specific subs at a slightly higher rate to make it enticing for people to commit to a spot over a longer term. It does not come with benefits. There are a couple of districts that do offer their building-specific subs benefits, but that's, there's a cost involved with that that we're not ready to commit to.
Are these people reporting to the building and potentially not being needed?
Well, we've never encountered a day that we have not needed someone. And the plan, the backup plan for that would be, then there would likely be a need somewhere else in the district, and we would move them from Building A to Building B if that's where there's a shortage.
So whatever their schedule is, they come and they are paid, and we figure out what to do with them.
Do they have any say, like if they're building-specific?
Yes.
Is there any potential thing, well, I'm building-specific, I want to teach here, not in this other building?
They would just be assigned, so we have a system that we use, an online system, it's called ASOP. And so when the second someone puts in for an absence, if I am the building-specific sub, I would be the person assigned to that absence. So like the one or two building-specific subs that are there would be the first one or two people to fill vacancies. So automatically, they would get assigned to spots. As it relates to what they would be doing in the building, certainly it's a little different at the elementary level than it might be at the middle school level, in terms of where their assignments are, right? Because as you get upper levels, you're doing specific content areas. But at this point, what we know is we have this significant shortage on any given day, and we're trying to build this pool of subs that we can potentially also see filling leave replacements and maybe even...
Right. I was going to say, does this make for more consistency in instruction?
Yeah.
When we have like a potential longer-term absence or something like that?
Absolutely. Yeah. And we're looking for certified, one of the requirements is going to be that they have to be certified as a teacher. Right now, the state does permit us to have non-certified people sub.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily always promote the practices that we want to see.
Okay.
So just to go back, the building-specific part of it refers to where they report and not necessarily where they end up?
Right. Because, so you may know that every, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you're going to be at Grafflin. But on a given Thursday, you get to Grafflin, and we find out there are no people out on that miraculous day. But down the road at Bell, they need a sub.
And we have the right to reassign them there?
Yeah, because they are our subs. So and they're not, this is not like a position that they're taking. This is a new rate that we're establishing.
Okay.
So how many, how many are we going to assign per building?
We're looking at doing two per building.
How many, two?
Two.
And is there a possibility that somebody shows up, has no position anywhere in the district, and we have to pay? Like if you have no, if you show up at Grafflin, and there's no need for substitute there, or it's one of those rainy days where anybody shows up?
Like on a Tuesday?
You know, it's not a sunny Friday, where maybe some people are absent. If there's no class you teach, do you get paid or not?
You would get paid in that instant if it is a day that you're there. But depending on how the structure of it works, you could also then have them not come in another day down the road where you anticipate no one will be out if there's some...
And we have, we have some sort of calculation of how much this is going to cost vis-à-vis what costs us now?
It is not, it is not a significant increase in cost for what it costs us to cover daily subs.
How much is not a significant, have we done a calculation?
We've looked at it. We've looked at how much our subs make. We also have different...
You're estimating, obviously.
Well, we have, because it depends on what you get. It depends on whether or not they're willing to commit. But we have subs, for example, who, after a certain amount of time, they start at 110, they move up to 115. Then we have subs who are retired teachers in the district. They make the higher rate. So we looked at what the average amount that it's costing us and how much we're short on subs on a daily basis. And we are, we kind of work from that place. And we also, when I surveyed my colleagues, find out how much they were paying, the rate of pay for these building-specific positions that exist, and it was anywhere from about 110 to about 135. So...
So almost by definition, since there are currently positions that don't get filled, which we don't, so we don't pay anybody because we don't have anybody, almost by definition, we're going to fill every empty position based on this new process, it's going to be higher?
Well, no, we end up finding subs to do the work that we need to do. It's just that you're scrambling in the morning to find subs, as opposed to knowing who shows up on any given day at your building.
Okay, so we don't have, we don't have a shortage of subs?
No. What is happening is, we have many situations where we have teachers scheduled for professional development, professional learning, and we have to cancel that because we can't cover their classes because of sub-coverage issues.
That's another component.
I think we've been here for a while.
But we know that in advance.
We do.
No, we don't have people filling the positions. So we're trying to provide a consistent structure so we know that people are guaranteed work, because subs typically are subs in our district and other districts, and they take whatever job they pull up first in the computer system. So it's not, we're trying to address a real problem that we have that we continue to hear in administrative council from our principals. This may not, if this doesn't work, then we can go back to our previous structure, but we're trying something different based on the feedback that we're receiving.
Has this worked in other districts?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we going to, are we going to ultimately have to appoint these people, like our next 4.1?
As a per diem sub, as a long...
Are they going to be appointed to a specific building?
We'll figure that out as we, I will be able to know for sure how we will appoint them. We worked that out.
I want to get something to change, but...
Well, they will be paid at that rate. In terms of how we appoint them, that's something that we'll work through with David as well, to make sure that we follow protocol.
So they're 1099 employees, John?
No, they're receiving salary.
Salary, but no benefits?
Right. Because even the daily sub, you know, who's getting $110, they, they're on salary.
So that the idea is, we hire people, we guarantee them four days of work a week, they take themselves off of these other sublists in other districts, so then they become our subs?
So we have our own form system?
Yes.
I think one key is that...
Right. I think it makes for better instruction for our students. It seems like that. And I, I mean, we could, I'm sure John could figure out, we could run numbers at the end of the year, basically, on where we net it out.
I think, I think Tony mentioned to me that each person will probably work four days a week rather than five days a week.
Okay.
How many substitute days would we do, like in the last four or five years on average?
How many substitute days?
Yeah, how many days do we need, how many substitute teachers do we have on average over a school year?
On any given day?
Oh, total over the school year.
Oh, I mean, if you can find that out.
On any given day. I multiply by 180.
No. We could certainly find that out through ASOP. The system can definitely run a report for us.
Is it, I'm just trying to get the magnitude. Is it 50? Is it 100? Is it 1,000?
On any given day, I would, from my, because I get the daily report every morning, there's roughly 30 to 40 people out any given day. And that covers teacher aides, teacher assistants, teachers.
Let me just give you some numbers. I think they'll probably tell you. If you look at our budget, our elementary schools, each one has a budget of $80,000 a year.
Each one has $80,000 a year for a substitute?
Yes. And the middle school is $75,000, and Greeley is $95,000. So it's pretty substantial. If you divide it by $110 a day.
We use, I mean, I came up with an increase, 15 times 180 times 30, of $81,000.
They're not all going to be paid at that rate, though, Jeff. Not everyone's getting that rate of $125. These building-specific people are getting that rate. We have per diem subs that are still going to get 110. We have other subs that will get 15. We have 115, sorry. And then we have other retired chaplaincy teachers who get a higher rate.
It's just these eight people. Yes.
More eight.
So this thing is ordered, it's ordered as if they all get $125. No more than $125?
No, no, no. I think what they are...
It says it's a rate for people categorized.
What we're going to do is that, we're going to have per diem sub, and then we have building-specific subs. Per diem sub will be at $110 a day or $115 a day.
Eventually $115.
And...
Their sub schedule?
Yes. Building-specific sub will be at $125 a day. So I was just telling you the budget, but I don't have 2017, 18 number, but, because I'm using this year's budget book, 2016, 17, Grafflin used $38,168. This is just the subs. And we're not talking about long-term subs. We're just talking about daily subs. And Roineburg is $42,000, West Worth is 60, Bell is 43, Seven Bridges is 70, and Minghua, Horace Greeley is 146.
But John, that wouldn't be a fair comparison for what we would be spending with these dedicated subs, because sometimes we have to cancel professional development because we can't get a sub, which means we would have liked to have paid a sub on some of those days, but we didn't, right?
That's...
Yeah.
Okay.
We have had that. And we're also losing money on those days because we paid for the professional development that we're not able to engage in.
So I'm looking at the attendance report from today. So unfilled absences, some of them are half-day, some of them are full-day. We had about 19.
So the, but all this calculation is not taking into account the missed opportunities and the expenses that arise from not having the subs, such as what Holly mentioned. So we're kind of going through a wild goose chase here with the numbers, because there's, we're not going to have real meaning here from these. I mean, we'll get numbers, but what will they mean, you know?
We would be able to do a more thorough analysis at the end of this year if we were able to find building-specific subs. But I think that the bigger issue that we face, again, based on what the principals have shared and Jamie kind of touched on it, is the disruption to instruction. And so when you have random subs on any given day, while it's great that you have a body in the room to facilitate the day for the kids, when you have certified teachers who come with consistency, who know the building, who know the teachers, who know the leadership, you can actually maintain instruction. And so it's not, and again, not to say that some per diem subs are not doing great work, but on a day where you're scrambling at 7:00 AM to get someone in here, you might piecemeal something together, and it's not as effective as it might be, knowing what we know about teachers' report with consistency. It also allows us the opportunity to develop those subs in terms of what we prioritize around good instruction, around learning. And we have had leave replacements. We've had a bunch of like medical leaves this year. We've also scrambled to fill those. And so when you're able to develop that sort of farm system, I think, you know, Warren, you mentioned that, you build this pool of candidates that hopefully you're developing as well.
I think if we're doing this in a fiscally responsible way, which it seems that we are, and we can verify that, perhaps once we enact it, that, you know, to me, that's a win-win. You're trying a creative way or an innovative way to solve a real problem that we have that brings better instruction to our kids. So I'm going to take it from that.
Right. But also, the point is that the salary number does not reflect the value that we're getting. You know, the overall...
Not just the number itself.
Value of having this kind of program. Because you have kids who will not be sitting in a classroom, not learning anything, you know, with no teacher, who come home and say, oh, we didn't have a social studies teacher today, we just watched a movie. Or, you know, or kids who do have a sub and they watch a movie anyway. So I think that just looking at these numbers just don't reflect...
And I'll just share one last scenario. We had a teacher who had to go out today to have an emergency medical procedure done. And she had to be out today for the remainder of the four days. But because of the way it went into the system, it went in as a four-day absence, right? Like, because the system hopes to find the same, it's just the way that the system is built. So it hopes to find the same person for four days. We couldn't get one person to take four days. And so because of the way it was put into the system, we couldn't even get a sub for today, because the only way you could get the job is if you were four days.
Get the job, as if you were four days. Wow.
So luckily, the teacher emailed me at the crack of dawn. I went into the system and broke it up. So it was four different days, and we were able to get a sub. But yeah, the ideal situation would be that we did have the same sub for four days. And so when you have a building-specific sub who reports and you're anticipating, I mean, she knew that the surgery was going to be today. That kind of happened unexpectedly yesterday, but she knew yesterday, and we would have been able to plan accordingly that would allow, you know, continuity.
So can we move these people around so you get a sub for four days now?
Well, that may very well be what ends up happening through this process, maybe people that we have.
So the one who can't be there today, like, can't we just move other people around so this one sub can be there for four days?
Yes, assuming someone could be, right. Someone could be here for four days. And so, yeah.
So there is, it is highly unlikely there's a scenario, we're going to have people here that we're paying for not doing anything. We have people out constantly for multiple reasons, and we have a lot of people that work for us. So if for some reason, we find that we're not using the subs in this way, then we'll change our process. But I'm telling you right now that that is highly unlikely.
And what I could tell you is, so we're not creating them intentionally as positions that are, you know, starting whatever, November 1st going through June 30th, because you don't want to bind yourself in that way. As Christine just pointed out, like, if you look at our attendance in September, the absences are not at the rate that they are right now. It's typical, right? Cold season, whatever. And so you wouldn't necessarily assign building-specific subs from day one of the school year to the last day of the school year. You would use them with some flexibility. So we would be responsible in that way, because come June, the needs are slightly different than, you know, so.
Although I thought we would have done an actual calculation. It doesn't sound like a material number, man.
In terms of how much the cost is going to be?
Uh huh.
Because some of it is subjective to what's going to actually happen on a day-to-day basis, and knowing how long they're actually going to be here. So these people right now, I feel like you have a better sense at the end of the year to see what it looks like. I don't know when these, when we're going to even have people ready to do this building-specific sub. Maybe December, by the time we post it and interview people, or maybe internal people that we have that we could potentially shift into this. So you're looking at an abbreviated amount of time over the course of the year. So I don't know that it would be a fair reflection on what the financial impact would be. But what I do know is that we are short subs, we are in a county that is doing more and more of this, they're calling it different things. Some places call it a permanent sub or whatever. Some places give medical benefits. And so I think it's important for us to invest in that and think about that, so that we can not only fill the needs that we have, but also develop skills in the teachers that sub in our district. So, but I think we can look at a greater cost analysis after a period of time of actually putting it in place. So.
Hold on, favor?
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move 4.2.
A second?
Any discussion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5.1 CSC summaries reported to the board on October 30th, 2018. I will move item 5.1. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 5.2 be resolved that the Board of Education approves a contract for independent contractor services with Patricia Sullivan as continuing education assistant for school year 2018, 2019 at $25 per hour and up to exceed $8,000, effective October 31st, 2018, tomorrow, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll move 4.2.
Do I have a second for 5.2?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.3 be resolved the Board of Education approve Chapco School Foundation Instagram gift for active and engaging learning through the Telonovale, Telonovales, the amount of-
Telonovelas.
Telonovelas, thank you. For the amount of $1,850 submitted by Horsebeal High School teachers Isabel Irazari and Donna Curtis. I will move 5.3.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you very much for the Instagram.
But there's another one after that.
Um, okay, we have another.
Wait, but we have two.
There's, there's two CSC.
All in favor?
Well, we'll do, um, I-
All in favor?
Aye.
5.4 be resolved the Board of Education approve Chapco School Foundation Instagram gift for painted playground games and activities in the amount of $2,500 submitted by Douglas Graffling Elementary School Principal Carol Bartlet.
I will move item 5.4.
I'll second 5.4.
I had a question on that. Is there any preparatory work in terms of the playground that needs to be done before it can be painted? I remember on our learning walk-
There were some issues, right.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure what space this was going to occupy and if there was an implicit-
We're, we're repaving that part of the playground.
The entire space, and then this is going to go on top of it.
Okay, excellent, I'm good then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
5.5 be resolved the Board of Education approves agreement KGND architects dated October 17th, 2018, the amount of $15,000 for architectural professional services for Seven Bridges Middle School, metal roof, roofing gutter, waterproofing leaks, and authorizes the Board President to execute this agreement. Do I have a motion for 5.5?
I'll move 5.5.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Tom, what is this? What is 5.5?
This is at Seven Bridges, we have leaks, and the most difficult part is actually, do you know the loading dock? Okay, right near the loading dock, and the water is actually going from the soil going down, and, but there's a building below that's actually the, um, the, the lockers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's just the place is the most, is going to be difficult to, to fix.
But KGND was on a design builder, have we asked them to pine on the design?
On the other hand, you know, this has been there for 15 years, 2000, 15 or 16 years now, so, so you know, this is not a new building anymore, right?
How long have we been having the leaks?
Sorry?
How long has it been leaking?
Um, I think we learned that about two weeks ago. Just that part, but there are other parts that they also need to look at.
You want to table this?
Why would we table this?
Yeah, I'm asking, do you want to table this, based on your concern that Katie and you designed the building and now that we need to-
I'm just trying to find out what it is.
But on the other hand, I think there's some urgency, and we do need to-
So-
So this, this, this amount will go to them redesigning that?
Investigate and-
Finding a solution.
Try to cook, find the, yeah, come up with a solution to fix.
I mean, how badly do we need this, John, right now?
Well-
Should we go back and answer this?
I, I think, I think based on this discussion right now, we should table this for the November 14th agenda.
I have no question, I was just trying to understand it.
I know, I understand.
Someone didn't come in front of the service committee, and I didn't understand it, but I'm, I'm okay with voting on it.
But if we have a leak, I'd have a real problem tabling this. I'd like this to be done immediately.
What I'm hearing though, what I'm hearing is that there's concern about us paying KDNG to fix a roof that they designed.
Well, I think they would be the perfect person to figure out how to fix it, if they're very familiar with the design.
Then why should we pay them for the rearch, to rearchitect?
Because maybe, I, I don't know why the roof is leaking, and I know that nothing lasts forever, so I'm not, I don't see any evidence that they've done anything wrong. I'm not sure why we would approach it with that perspective.
So maybe John can talk to Eric. Maybe John can talk to Eric Kyer and ask him for, we can approve it and then-
So can we approve it pending?
Well, I think we can approve it, but then, then we just ask John, ask Eric to give us a report on why we're doing this.
Okay. We'll definitely ask him to give us a report on this.
Okay.
A report and a fee structure.
Wait, so are we saying that we're going to approve the-
We'll approve the-
The $15,000 or are we going to amend it?
We'll approve the expenditure, but, but I guess I'd like to know, after he does this, why did we have to do it and why, what, what failed? As Vicki said, things don't always last forever, but what failed and why we paid to fix this?
Have we had leaks before? I have to assume we've had leaks.
We have leaks at other places before.
Right, okay.
Some bridges in the library if you see.
I remember Seven Bridges, we had leaks in the library and also the gym.
So the point is leaks, leaks are not an unusual occurrence.
It's just-
They do happen.
You know, if, if this had been 10 years ago, I'll probably be concerned, more concerned because it was still relatively a new building, but we're still thinking about Seven Bridges as a brand-new building, it is not.
How many years old is it, did you say?
We opened in 2003, so-
I'm thinking how we're going to replace our roofs and our house, but the, I guess my concern, I guess my question is not that we need to look into fixing it, but that's $15,000 just to look into it, I don't know what the repair costs.
There will be repair costs, yes.
What?
There will be additional costs because-
Exactly, so I, I, like, I'm a little nervous, like, we're going to pay $15,000, and then, then what's the cost of the repair?
So, so what I'm hearing, again, I'm going to come back to the original concern.
We can't find out until we pay the $15,000.
So the original concern is not that the roof needs to be repaired, we need to do that, it's why are we paying KDNG to do an architectural design on a roof that they originally designed? Why are we paying them $15,000? So that's what I'm going to go back to the, do you want to approve this tonight or do you want to table this?
Why don't we take a vote, and if it gets turned down, it gets turned down. I guess the question is how long will it take them to do this review?
Speaking for myself, I'd like to table it, and, and so that's, that's my progress.
Well, we don't have to table, we can just, we can just vote it down and then got to repropose it next time. I'm prepared to vote, yes, all right.
Well, can I ask, how typical is this to pay an amount, okay, a roof is leaking, how typical is it to pay this amount for an architect to figure out why?
It, it's not to figure out why, they, they are going to do the designing, they have, they have the entire team there already, they went there to look at it with Joe.
Right.
The architects were there, engineers were there, they already, and our roofing people, everyone was there.
Okay.
So they have a way, they just need to have a proposal to approve, and then they can start designing and come up with, you know, with a plan.
So the $15,000 is for a design?
And come up with a solution and give the directions to the roofer and what to do.
And in your estimation and your experience of having worked on facilities for a number of years, is this, this seem reasonable to you?
Yes.
It is to me.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that, and I would be willing to move forward, but so we'll take a vote.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm struggling with this one.
I will vote aye, but I want to report from, I, I need a letter from Eric.
I think, I think the best thing is that, you know-
I'm going to approve it, aye.
If this is approved, I think it is, right, I'll tell Eric to begin to work immediately, but Minghua, ask him on the 15 to come to report to the Facilities Committee.
Or send us a letter.
Sure.
Explain to us why we have to pay for a new design.
On a roof that they designed.
What?
On a roof that they designed.
Right.
Right?
And there's no chance that this is because of construction, right?
No, this is a different place.
It's on the other side of the building.
This is the front, and, you know, the STEM, STEM center is in the, the garden side, the, the field side.
Do you mean the original construction or? No, the construction that's going on for the-
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had disturbed something that caused it.
I guess, you know, kind of, just my last thing, and, and not to belabor this, but, you know, this is, you know, I don't deal with facilities at my house, but I, we all, you know, we have homes that we've had leaky roofs, I would guess at this point, and someone usually comes and looks at the roof and comes up with a proposal to fix what is there. They don't come up with a proposal like to spend money to redesign it and then decide to fix it. So I'm a little, I understand it may need a new design, but I'm curious, like, why we're redesigning it, why that's not part of just the repair cost.
Maybe I'm using the wrong word, it's not redesigning, they're really just coming up with a solution to fix them.
They're coming up with solutions also project managing the actual repair work.
Which involves an approval process, so it's complicated. I, I would like to say I always found KDNG to be very honorable.
Right.
And very fair.
Right.
But I think it's also reasonable to ask questions about this.
Right.
Because they had designed the original building, so moving forward and having more information for you as this process plays out, I think is reasonable, and I think Eric and Katie and you will be more than happy to provide it.
So what I would, so what I would do is that-
Then, then I'm okay with moving forward and, and getting more information.
So what I would do is that-
To how this all went down, basically.
I would ask Eric Kyer to write us a letter.
Okay.
And then also give a report to the Facilities Committee on the November 15th. We have a Facilities Committee meeting.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me.
Okay.
So it's four to one.
Okay.
All right, motion passes.
Okay.
Item 5.6 be resolved the Board of Education approves a contract with the Arts of the Union Free School District for Special Education Services for one student, 702613.
Can we take, sorry, can we take 5.6 through nine together?
5, 6, 5, 7, 5, 8, and 5, 9?
If that's okay, yeah.
Right, all services for students and-
These are all services for students.
And outplacement districts.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, to approve 5, 6, 5, 7, 5, 8, and 5, 9?
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yeah. Item 5.9, what is this contract?
5.9 is a, for a special education student, and they had to make an adjustment to the contract, which is in, in your backup document.
I don't see a special one. Oh, I don't have the backup. All right.
Is there a reason why that one doesn't have a dollar amount?
It's change of services.
Goodness.
Yeah, right, okay.
I just, we're being hesitant, I don't want to share it because of the confidentiality, but if anyone would like to see the backup, I have it here, I can pass it.
I have it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Item 5.10, the Board of Education approves a gift from Greeley Sports Boosters for two training tables in the amount of $1,539.76, the athletic department.
I move 5.10. I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you very much for the training tables, I mean, that new training-
You can use them.
The new training area by where Jason's office used to be is unbelievable, it's open, it's bright, it, it's inviting, the kids are-
There's a lot of kids in there, yes.
So compared to that little closet it used to be at, so, all in favor? All right. 5.11 be resolved the Board of Education approves CCSD bid renewal B 2017-13 Construction Labor Materials General Construction recommending award to JIC Building Development Group at various rates effective November 16th, 2018 through November 15th, 2019. I will move 5.41. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Be resolved the Board of Education approves CCSD bid renewal number 957 Roofing Maintenance and Service recommended award to Weatherproofing Technologies, Inc. in the amount of $91,810 plus hourly, hourly rates effective November 2nd, 2018 through November 1, 2019. Do I have a bid? Or a motion?
I'll make a, I'll motion, move to approve.
Clarissa? A bid $90,000. Okay. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
5.13 whereas the district owns the attached list of items which are no longer useful and necessary for the school district purposes and have no value to the school district, therefore be resolved the Board hereby declares such items to be surplus property and of no value to the school district and authorize disposal of such equipment in a prudent manner in accordance with the law. I will move 5.13.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.14 be resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of Christopher Dalrymple as a member of the audit committee effective of October 31st, 2018. I will move 5.14.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, for offering to serve.
Thank you, Beth, for sending him the message, so. Thank you for pushing him forward.
Right, okay.
I spoke to Chris and he was very excited to join our group. Guess what I did for you, Christopher? I warranted you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm not, I'm not going to read all 5.15, but 5.15 is basically a resolution